Meeting of the Community Affairs Commission. We're meeting here tonight to talk about establishing a citizens' redistricting advisory commission. Do we need to call roll?
No.
Okay. All right, the ordinance is brought forward to this commission and it's sponsored and done by Mr. Volin. Mr. Volin, would you like to explain the ordinance that you bring me forward?
Yes, thank you. So yes, I'm proposing ordinance 2030 that would create a citizens' redistricting advisory commission. I trust that you all have read the packet of the proposal, so I'm just going to briefly summarize what it does. I was the author of the 2012 ordinance that redistricted the city. It was the map that I drew that had the fewest changes to the city's districts. That was accepted by the council. But you know, there's a greater concern, which was that we essentially were picking our constituents. And that shouldn't be the case. And there's been a movement afoot. The League of Women Voters has been proposing at the state level for a while that there should be an independent commission that redistricts every decade. And I felt like it was not appropriate to do so or to support such a thing without also doing so at the local level. So this is proposing a local version of what they're proposing at the state level with a couple of modifications that are based on our limited ability to constrain ourselves. So it proposes a nine-person commission, three Democrats, three Republicans, three independents. And they have a two-year mandate that would be, they would start at the beginning of 21. And by the end of 22, they would have to have submitted a proposed map for the council to approve. They would have to meet at least 12 times over that two years, at least once every two months. But they could meet more often if they want to. And they would have a two-year mandate. So redistricting happens in the second year after a census. But in the first year after a census, there's re-presincting that's done at the county level. And how the precincts are drawn directly affects how districts in the city are drawn. And so if the commission isn't familiar and with and aware of what's happening at the county level, it may make it more difficult in the second year of the decade to redistrict at the city. So this proposes a two-year commission so that the commissioners can learn all the ins and outs of redistricting, which is very complicated, and can also give input when the county commissioners consider re-presincting. Julie Thomas can tell you what it's like when a precinct is split between city and county. It's a royal pain and everyone's behind. And so getting precincts right is important. This commission wouldn't have a direct impact on precincting. They would simply be providing informed opinions from a city perspective. Anyway, this legislation is not binding. Or rather, the work of the commission would not be binding. It is an advisory commission. But at the state level, what the League of Women Voters proposes is that the general assembly be given proposed maps by an independent commission. The assembly can accept or reject the maps. If they reject it, the commission gets one more chance in their proposal to redo the maps. If the general assembly still doesn't accept it, it gets thrown to the United States Supreme Court. Statute does not allow us as a city council to bind ourselves to the decision of a court. Like if I could write this to require us to accept the decision, you know, to accept the judgment of a judge, you know, then I would do that. But we don't have that authority to bind ourselves. So we are still the ultimate authority on redistricting. But I think it would certainly provide a bad sign if the council rejected the commission's work. So I still think it could be effective. So I'm not going to get into the details of how redistricting works. There's a bunch of federal rules for how districts need to be drawn. But if you, my fellow colleagues, don't want to find out how redistricting works, then you should pass a citizens' redistricting advisory commission. Again, it would expire and dissolve at the end of 2022. And it would not need to be reconvened until 2031 unless, and we've made provisions for this. I worked extensively with Stephen Lucas, who's incredibly helpful as usual. Except if, for some reason, in the middle of the decade, we have an obligation to redistrict because of growth of the city or shrinkage of the city, any change in the city's boundaries that would require redistricting. And I'm not even sure what circumstances would trigger that. But for the most part, this is the kind of thing that would convene for two years in the first and second years of a decade, starting beginning of 2021. And it's not super urgent that the commission be convened promptly on January 1st. You know, it's going to take some time to find people, I think. I can talk a little bit about how it's constituted. It follows the principle of the League of Women Voters proposal, which says that even though there's nine members, the council has to choose 18 candidates. And then nine will be selected at random from those candidates. The League of Women Voters proposal actually proposes, I think, triple the number of candidates and that people are chosen at random. But I think that's an important point so that it's not, you know, like there's got to be more breadth, more diversity of people chosen for it. But that's a unique aspect of this unlike other commissions in order to improve its relative independence. So that's about all I have to say about it. I'm happy to answer questions about it. I hope you'll find it would have interest.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Volin. Does anybody have any questions for our ordinance? Just Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes. And again, who would make the recommendations for the three independent bodies that would be put in the pool?
So
I mean, would the Republican Party Chair have appointing power and the
No, it's a very good question.
Democratic Chair, how exactly?
We still appoint the commission. Councilmembers still appoint the commission, but they appoint the 18 candidates. And you know, like the council itself to choose who is eligible to be randomly drawn. You know, so but it would be like any other commission in that respect. Does that make sense?
Okay. And I'm trying to think back to 2012 when we were doing it. Does the mayor have any appointing power here or is it strictly a council?
It's strictly council because this is strictly an issue for the council. It's the drawing of the districts. It's one of the least mayoral things there is. Like this is entirely within our concern. So no, there's no mayoral appointments to this.
And then who provides the staff's support? Would that again be our staff, our council staff? Or I recall our clerk at the time, Regina Moore, had a lot to do with the last redistricting that culminated in 2012.
Mr. Lucas, did we say our staff or clerk staff or both? Who was going to staff this one? I've already forgotten.
That's a good question. And I'd have to pull up the ordinance, whether it's specified. I know you and I had talked that council staff would certainly support the commission's work. And I believe the clerk staff is, as Councilmember Sandberg noted in the past, has also supported the council's efforts. So I think we were expecting something similar for this commission.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions out there? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you, Councilmember Volin. Did I hear you say that once this commission has done their work? And then if there's a, sorry, if there's a substantial lessening of the population or increase of the population, then that could be revisited? And is that within the 10 years since all this is based on census counts? Can you do that before the next census count?
I'm actually not sure what would trigger it. I don't think it would be simply population growth. I think it would be an actual expansion of the city boundaries. But again, I'm speaking without knowledge. Mr. Lucas might have some more light to shed on this.
And perhaps you could restate the question. I think I heard when might sort of a mid-decade redistricting process come up? I think the one instance that statute mentions is annexation when there's new territory. I do believe there are provisions for including annexed territory in existing districts, but that could be an instance where district lines need to be redrawn.
Hey, thank you. That makes sense. So it wasn't clear that this commission, proposed commission, or after it's done its work, it could then change the district thing that it established. But your explanation explained at least the one case that that could happen. So thank you very much. And that's not based on the census count. Depending on annexation, it's just an increase on the population or the territory, one or the other.
Correct. And I know Councilmember Volin mentioned a decrease. I think that would be very unlikely that the city would lose territory for some reason.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Mr. Rallo, do you have any questions? That you'd like to ask?
I don't. I just, I, well, except just regarding the redistricting, which I need to maybe follow up on these later, but you know, I'm curious about how effective the census has been, you know, what the participation has been and what that might mean. And then, and then also the addition, if the city goes ahead with you know, with annexation, how that affects it, which is a bit more clear for me. But I think we're all concerned that this census has arrived at a very poor time in terms of with the pandemic. And we may just be losing population without really losing population. I mean, you know, my meaning is that because of lack of participation.
So there is a great concern.
It's more of a qualm.
Yeah, there's a great concern about the validity of the census. And the Biden administration is going to be looking at whether or not there needs to be some kind of partial or total do-over. I think, though, that if that happens, then the state requirement for redistricting will be pushed back accordingly as well. I mean, the whole point of redistricting is to reflect the results of the census. So I mean, because we're in crazy days and the pandemic has changed, I mean, the fact that we're meeting like this still after nine months is a sign that things aren't normal. So, I mean, I wrote the ordinance.
That's an understatement. We're in the height of the pandemic right now.
I agree. I wrote the ordinance assuming normal times because I had to. But I think that if if there is a decree from the state level saying that everything gets pushed back, then we should push back the date of the effective date of the commission accordingly.
Well, yeah, this is more of a comment. I mean, my concern mostly about the lack of participation in the census is regarding the funding, our funding, and what we get back in terms of tax dollars. So, but it does have some implications for this, but it's too early to say. And so I'm fine. I have no other questions. Thanks.
I would just respond briefly that this is about what happens after the census. The redistricting comes after the census. I wholeheartedly agree with you that the census, 2020 census, has been problematic, to say the least. But eventually we will get a number. We're going to get numbers and we have to divide up the city accordingly.
Sure. Do we know when that is? Sorry about that.
It should be July of 21. That's normally when the census reports local data. At this rate, though, we may be delayed six months or more. I don't know.
Councilmember Sandberg?
It's been a while since I've read your proposal, but was there something in there that said the officers of the council, the president, vice president, and parliamentarian would be the ones that are going to formulate this advisory body? Or is it this committee?
What they're going to do is choose the candidates for the advisory body. There would be 18 candidates, six Republicans, six Democrats, six independents.
No, I know that, but who from this body is going to get this ball rolling and get this body pulled together?
It would be the president, yeah, the three officers.
Okay.
Okay. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Mr. Sims? You're still muted, Jim.
Thank you. So this will be different than our current practice with as far as commissions. And so it would be the council leadership that would have to do the interviews and then pair the number 18 down to nine. And is that what I'm hearing as opposed to this Community Affairs Committee?
You know, I'm actually quite ambivalent about who would do the choosing. The officers seemed like the most logical thing at the time, but one of the committees could do it. But neither the committee nor the officers would choose the actual members. The clerk would choose the members by random draw, by coin toss if necessary, or lots, drawing of lots. So the 18 candidates would be vetted by like as the proposal says, the officers. But it could be the Community Affairs Committee. I'm fine with that change. But they would not choose the actual makeup of the commission. That would be done randomly.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Sandberg?
Yeah. And with respect to that, I think one of the things that we thought through fairly well the last go around, which I completely agree this needs to be taken over to a completely neutral body. And we as council members should not in any way, shape, or form be choosing who our voters are. Now that said, how it was handled in 2012 was the three at-large candidates actually were the ones that kind of were a part of the backbone of the committee. Because of course, we don't have districts. And so we didn't necessarily have a horse in the
It's a good idea. Yeah.
So may I just suggest that that might be the way to go is to allow the at-large candidates to at least get rolling on that pool, that pool of 18. But then I understand it's completely random from there. It's the luck of the draw from there.
If you wanted to make that amendment, I would consider it friendly. I mean, not that we, I mean, we can, we can write it up for next week, but that works for me.
Yeah, I would certainly suggest that because again, it removes any, you know, well, as much as we possibly can, political stigma related to us choosing our own.
That's a well-made point. Yeah.
Yeah, that's certainly a good idea. And then so the data will come in in 21. And so the first step, if I, if I'm understanding is right, is we need to ask the clerk to put out a call for candidates for this commission?
Yeah, it'd be like any other commission. Yeah.
Oh, okay. Or is the first step, yeah, pardon me for asking these kind of questions. Or is the first step that we need to vote on bringing this to fruition next week?
Well, if the commission doesn't exist, the clerk is not going to do anything to form one. So yeah, you have to approve the creation of the commission in order to I mean, if one doesn't exist, I'm proposing that we create this.
Gotcha. Thank you. Just checking, making sure. Okay. What else? Then what else do we need to? So we're good about that. We're going to do an amendment. And
Well, I'm simply saying that if Councilmember Sandberg wants to bring that amendment, I think it's a good idea and I would support it. I have no problem with it.
Shall we do that now? Or you mean, is this the time and the place to propose that amendment?
What say you?
Given how we're meeting at the moment, it may be hard to put that in writing and circulate that among everyone. It's certainly something we can draft up and distribute in the packet this Friday in advance of next week's meeting.
I would certainly propose it. And if Mr. Villan is okay with that, then however, we have to procedurally do that.
Okay.
Sure. Let's get it moving. And then after that occurs, the sequence would be then we could instruct the clerk to put out a memo for soliciting members for the 18 members.
I will say that the ordinance would need to be passed by the council and signed by the mayor before the commission were to be created. And then upon the adoption of the ordinance, I think the clerk could initiate the process of announcing the vacancies. IT would need to add the commission to the city's website to provide a place for folks to apply and go through those steps. So all the logistics of actually creating the board would happen after the legislation is signed by the council and the mayor.
If I could just say one thing, we should be very careful not to refer to them as as anything but candidates. They're not actually members of the commission until they're chosen at random. So in this case, we're choosing candidates to the commission, candidates for the commission, but they're not commissioners until they're drawn by random lot.
Understand. All right. So we're in agreement on that. Mr. Rallo?
Is this random process, a public process?
Yeah, I mean, if it's not explicitly stated in the language, I'm happy to make sure that that's explicit. But it should be publicly done, like the drawing of lots, the random thing. I mean, the whole point of this thing is to inspire confidence in government and to recognize that this is inherently political act. So the more transparency, the better. If the language is not sufficiently specific for you, I am, again, just like with Councilmember Sandberg, happy to, I would consider such a friendly change.
Great.
Great. Other items that are coming up as questions in people's minds? I don't have any other questions either. It appears straightforward and it's a long lead time. So, Mr. Lucas, do we need public comment at this?
Yes.
All right. I will ask if, should the public feel that they want to make a comment on it? Please use the chat function or send us an email to let us know. And we will give you time to speak about the ordinance that we have discussed.
And I do have a request for a public comment. I'll just grab it off of the chat. So if you'll give me just a moment.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so this is a comment from the, I think Dave Askins with the B-Square Beacon. He says that under C, membership qualifications, there's this. Two political affiliations, commissioners shall be evenly divided by political affiliation. Under A, three shall be affiliated with the Democratic Party. B, three shall be affiliated with the Republican Party. And under C, three shall be independent of affiliation with either of the two major political parties in the state. And applicants are required to attest that they are eligible to serve under those conditions. It's not clear how an applicant can attest to their individual eligibility under this group level attribute. I think the idea is likely that the partisan affiliation of the applicant is supposed to be defined by attestation as opposed to some other criterion, like the most recent primary that an applicant has participated in. But that's not what this wording achieves. So there probably needs some additional scrutiny if that's the intent. I think this legislation has a lot of potential, but there are several problematic aspects like this that I think need to be sorted out. Last time around, the county commission voted on July 1st, 2011, to establish a boundary commission. So I think there's time to improve this ordinance. And that is the comment. And while I was reading that, I did not see any additional requests for comment.
Right? What, let's say, do we have a motion to do we need a motion to conclude our meeting today and send this forward with? Oh, Mr. Sims, thank you. Muted, Jim.
Yeah, I'm getting used to it. Thank you very, very much. I do have a comment. But then after we do public comment, then we go back to final comments to committee members, just to keep us on track. Mr. Volin, what say you to the comments that was proposed by Mr. Askins?
Well, I don't share his opinion about it not being ready. I think that it's fine. In particular, the question of attestation, there is actually a standard that is used to determine affiliation. It's whether they voted in a primary or not. And an example of this is somebody cannot declare as a candidate for a partisan nomination to an office unless they have voted in that party's primary before. So for example, in a previous election, there were people who filed for candidacy in the Democratic primary. And because they had never voted in Democratic primary before, they had to have the permission of the party chair in order to run. So I consider that to be an adequate standard for determination of affiliation. If there are people with ideas that, you know, are more stringent, I'm not sure that they're, I mean, I'm flying with it. But I'm not sure that there is a better way to determine affiliation than that. That, in fact, I think that it says each commission member shall have voted as a resident of the city of Bloomington in at least three of the last five general elections. We could say that each member affiliated with the Democratic Party must have voted in at least one Democratic primary and no Republican primaries. So we could be more specific there, but I don't think it's that hard to change. It's more what the council thinks would be a sufficiently strict scrutiny. I want to make sure we can find people to serve on the commission. But I don't think even these are that strict a change.
Any thoughts? Anybody else? Mr. Rallo?
Do you think that will need to, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I was just going to say that I think the difficulty comes from ascertaining who is an independent.
Well, that's not that hard either, that they don't vote in primaries. There are plenty of people who don't actually vote in primaries.
Well, that doesn't necessarily mean they're an independent.
That isn't necessarily true. Don't independents just have that independence to be able to choose whichever ballot, the candidate that they most prefer? So that is kind of problematic. Of course, we also have a forming Green Party in the community now, which I assume that would go under the category of independent. Yes?
Yeah, yes, that's, I mean, I admit that this is a handicapped by the nature of our political system, that it's mostly largely two-party system. But I think the standard is relatively simple. If you have voted in a primary, as long as you haven't also voted in the opposition primary, that makes you an independent. Now, there are some states that have registered Democrats or registered Republicans or registered independents. Indiana doesn't have that. This is the closest thing to it.
Mr. Sims, did you have a comment?
No, that was fine. Thank you.
I wondered if we were going to have trouble filling the independent, the three independents. I just wondered if that was going to be any issue. And it seems like if we need 18 viable candidates, that's, it seems like that might be it seems like that might be difficult to find. Yes, or am I? No?
No.
Okay, okay.
I don't think so.
There was a lot of interest in 2012?
We didn't. We didn't use this method in 2012. This is brand new, and I think this is very much an improvement on the process.
Okay. Mr. Sims?
Well, I was just trying to let it soak in about criteria on determining D R or I's. And I think I heard something that the last three to five general elections that can be changed to the last primary. Is is that what I heard?
So what I read was one aspect, one criterion is they have to have to be voters. That's three people who take part in politics.
Registered voters.
As and again, this is taken directly from League of Women Voters. I, you know, lifted it verbatim and adjusted it for local local conditions. But you know, I think I reduced the number. It was a greater number out of the last ten elections for statewide. They really wanted people who were taking part in politics. And what I'm suggesting is we could add a line that also specifies affiliation, that defines affiliation as you have voted in that party's primary and you have not voted in the other party's primary. But that language is not in the proposal, but I would welcome adding it if that would satisfy the concern about the definition of affiliation.
Thank you.
You want that added? Mr. Sims?
I think there's still time to, like, like Councilmember Sandberg's friendly amendment, there's still time to further consider it. I have to kind of let it marinate what I'm hearing tonight and how that's going to play out, how restrictive it can be. We have some pretty active people that really may not have been in town, except for maybe the last election. So I don't want to constrain a person by saying you haven't voted in the last three general elections. But again, there's there's still time to kind of sort it out.
If I may, I I think the objective here is to find nine members of this community that will pledge to be as nonpartisan or bipartisan or tri partisan as possible in drawing these districts fairly, continuously with respect to the population. They they mostly are going to be driven by data. If they're doing the job the way we want them to do it. So I I think we don't need to be all that concerned about the individual nine makeup of the body, but just independent minded people in general, regardless of their party affiliation. Might be hard, but I don't think so.
Well, the the numerical restrictions, you're right. I think that's going to drive how they draw the maps and how it it works. So. All right, let's see. Mr. Volan, anything? I'm I'm always going to the point where I'm wondering what our next step is in this process. So we are moving forward in what we do. So what is our next step?
Move, do pass?
Second.
Thank you. All righty, do pass.
I'll I'll poll the members and everybody will vote. I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you. Well, no, I need I need help. It's like nine o'clock at night. All right.
We got a we got a script. We'll we'll give you the script later. Stephen will. That'll help a lot.
All right, all right, all right. We're going to consider recommendations. I will start on my left, Councilmember Sandberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Volan?
Councilmember Volan's not actually on the committee. He's here.
Oh, count. Oh, he's the sponsor, Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. So that's a four oh do pass?
Thank you all.
That will this will come back to the council at next week's regular session. And if there are amendments that need to be drafted between now and then, we can do that and have those considered next week. Again, virtual meetings like this don't lend themselves to putting things in writing and circulating those amendments easily. So thank you for your patience.
And Mr. Lucas, do you have enough generated from tonight? It's meaning to go ahead with those amendments? Or do we need to contact you between now and Friday?
I I have been taking down your comments. I I may need to get in touch with any folks who are sponsoring, so we'll we'll reach out if we need more details from you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else for the good of the cause tonight? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, everybody's. Everybody say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.